For the City Council.
Oh, thank you. All right.
For the City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Angela Chaburka, who was asked to be excused today. First thing we'll do is review our agenda for the Redevelopment Agency meeting at 6:00 P. M., which we have in under acknowledgements. Black History Month, a recognition of Pastor Charles Petty, which will should be done by Sharda Jones of the Diversity Commission. Following those acknowledgements, we have approval of minutes, number of minutes that get us almost all the way caught up, I think. Pretty close. And then, go ahead.
So Councilmember Chaburka won't be here, so someone needs to pick those minutes?
Yeah, either that or we need to push them, push them off. Can you, you'll have it, okay, you'll take a look at those, okay, thank you, Councilmember Blair. And then we'll have our public comments and comments from the board members and executive director and adjournments, so any questions on the agenda? Or discussion items on that? All right. We will, our work session agenda, we're going to go to our second item first, or beginning with the fiscal year 2022, 23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and fiscal year 2022 and 2023 financial audit. And then we invite Corle, Corle Jensen, our Deputy Controller, to come and present with that, and also it looks like Erin Hickson.
Actually, it's Jeff Miles.
Oh, Jeff Miles, Jeff Miles is here, okay. Jeff and Corle, and then, yeah, come on up. The presentation for Visit Ogden will be moved to the end of the work session if Sarah is able to join us from the Capitol. Her day, busy day at the Capitol.
You can go there if you want to. Yeah.
Plenty of chairs, thank you. Great. Yeah, sorry, Erin and I keep kind of changing hats with Ogden City. He did the presentation back in January to the council and I'm doing the work session with you here today. Just to kind of know, I primarily oversee the financial statement audit for the city and then Erin kind of does a quality control review of the audit as well as overseeing a lot of the single audit and then also some additional agreed upon procedures that we're assisting the city with for the RDA and for the airport. But just kind of a brief overview of the audit for the year. Overall, we feel like the audit went, went very well. The city is always very prepared when we come, not a lot of delays waiting for information to come to us, so we definitely commend the finance team of the city for, for the readiness that they have when we come on site for the audit. Just kind of a broad overview of kind of how an audit works. A lot of people are think it's important to distinguish between a financial statement audit, maybe like an operational audit. We really are just taking the financial information of the city and making sure that they're accounting for it properly in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. I think a lot of time, the, the public will think we're doing more of a how well is the city doing type of audit, or how well are we operating, but really we're just making sure that everything is the information that is being collected is, is properly accounted for. And so for an audit, you know, the city has, you know, wide variety of different funds. For every fund, we, we do like a materiality calculation that kind of drives how much testing we're going to do for each fund and, and materiality is calculated based on either the revenue in a fund or the assets in a fund, and then that gives us kind of a range of how much we're going to test in each fund. And then based on that, most audit firms have a pretty similar approach to it where we always look at the most significant transactions in each fund, and then from there, if, if we feel like there's more that needs to be tested, we use sampling techniques to kind of drill into more specific areas as needed, depending on the size of the fund and the, and the type of transactions that we are auditing. So it's just kind of a big overview of, of kind of what, what drives a financial statement audit. And, and so with that, another big part of the audit is, is obtaining an understanding of the controls in place at the city, and so we, we come out in August, the last couple of years, and we'll meet with the, the finance team and we'll kind of go through state compliance requirements and then we'll update our understanding of internal controls. And part of that process will, will do what's called a walkthrough where we'll say, show us your accounts payable process from beginning to end and, and verify that it's working right. Same for cash receipts and for payroll and for journal entries to make sure that, that the controls are, are operating properly. And then we come back and do the audit, every transaction that we look at, we'll make sure it's, it's following that, that trail of controls to make sure that everything has the proper authorizations, approvals, journal entry within the financial system of the city. So overall, we feel like the city has a good internal control structure. A big part of that is having segregation of duties of who's doing what within the, the general ledger system. And we feel like there's adequate segregation between the various individuals within the accounting department to facilitate good internal controls, which then helps us not have as many journal entries during the course of our audit. From a financial help perspective, I'd say that the city's doing, doing very well as, as most cities in, in Utah are, especially with the amount of money that came through the COVID era and it's like, I mean, Ogden hasn't even spent any of the ARPA allocations that came in 2022. So we're kind of sitting on this, this, this money that needs to be spent by the end of calendar year 2026. And, and, and that money being government money has to be spent for that money in particular was for infrastructure projects, and I know that's been kind of on the, the mind of council of how that money's going to be spent. So right, right now that the city has healthy fund balances pretty much across the board, so we'd, we'd say that's in good financial condition right now.
Is there a timeline that we have to spend that ARPA money by?
So it needs to be encumbered, which means you know what you're going to spend it on by the end of 2024, so you'll have 10 months to kind of decide what you're going to spend it on, and then it needs to be spent in completely by the end of 2026. So overall, and, and one key metric, I'm sorry, I don't have the number with me, is kind of what your fund balance in your general fund is. The state only allows you to go up to 35% of unassigned fund balances, which is really the money that the City Council has the most discretion over is your unassigned fund balance in your general fund. And I believe, I'm remembering right, Corle, I can't remember off the top of my head, that that, the percent, they allow you to have up 35% unassigned based on your current year revenue. And so at the end of fiscal year 23, you're 22% of, of one year's revenue essentially set aside for whatever council deems necessary. And so previously that was only allowed 25%, but then they changed that three or four years ago as, as more kind of federal money. And then also I think, I think it helps cities have a little bit more of a rainy day fund and not always dependent on needing to raise funds in another fashion if they kind of hit a shortfall in a given year, so it's nice to have a little more buffer within the general fund. As far as, sorry, I kind of took my little notes here. As far as like improvements, I don't think we necessarily have any significant recommendations. And during the audit, we only had there was no journal entries that came from the audit team. We did have a journal entry, a semi-significant journal entry that came from Corle. We had a misallocation of some funds between two business type funds related to a bond issuance that took place during 2020 and, and kudos to Corle. I mean, it shows that the system's working, that Corle was identified that we had this problem two years ago and we fixed it this year, but we feel like as presently constituted, that there's good staff in place, good controls in place to really help the audit go well and also to get information to council in a timely fashion. And then I know it's been kind of an ongoing issue with inter-fund loans. You know, the state pretty much dictates that any loan between two funds should be paid back within 10 years. And there are, there's a few loans between funds that the city currently has that are outstanding greater than, than 10 years. It doesn't, doesn't give me a lot of heartburn as long as the city intends to pay it back, but if there really is no revenue stream that facilitate the payback of a loan, then I think it really should be considered by council to forgive that loan or record a transfer in lieu of, of the loan. And I think that'd be kind of, that's really the best practice that the state expects us to have. And so I, I just, I think it really deserves a good conversation between management and, and council. What we feel is really likely to happen over the next couple of years.
And where did those loans originate from? Who, who holds those loans right now?
I'll defer to Corle, I can't remember right now.
So I actually I can actually show you. So there, these are the current inter-fund loans. And we have one from the refuse to the Ogden River RDA sanitary fund to the RDA, and it was for the purchase of the Swift Building, the general fund to the RDA, the BDO RDA to the Ogden River RDA, and then the CBD to the RDA for the flower foods building. And then we had two to the airport, one from BDO and one from the general fund. So just as far as each of these loans go, for the refuse and sanitary, YBR is currently looking at the 12% transfer. They're doing that study on the 12% transfer that we do every year. And we will be looking at proposing taking care of these loans as a part of that transfer once that transfer's done, but they will be either written off or paid off by the end of the RDA area. And then the general fund to the RDA administration will be planning on bringing a resolution to council to write that off this fiscal year. And then the BDO to Ogden River, that loan is currently receiving regular payments annually, so that should be paid off her shortly. And then CBD to the RDA administration has a plan to start repayment in fiscal year 2025 and it should be paid off in about five years. And then the BDO to airport. We will be bringing a budget transfer to you to pay that off. And depending on the performance at the airport, that may require a transfer at the end of the fiscal year from the city, depending on the cash flow at the airport. And then the general fund to our, or to the airport that receives regular payments annually, so that does have a plan to be paid off. Does that help? Okay.
Any, any other questions on our inter-fund loans?
Not on the inter-fund loans. Anybody else have one of those? I'll defer. If not, can you describe what it means to test a fund?
To test, to test a fund?
Yeah, you mentioned that was one of the first things you went through.
Well, we, we determine the materiality of each fund and then, I mean, one way to look at it, each fund is almost subject to its own little mini audit during, during our audit. We, you know, we can't, can't just look at the city as a whole because if we calculate the materiality at that level, there'd be funds that we wouldn't look at because, you know, you're, especially proprietary funds are so large, and so it requires us to drill down. So when we test a fund, we're really an audit is primarily more balance sheet driven, so we look at a lot of the balance sheet accounts, like cash, we confirm cash with banks. If it has a receivable balance, we will confirm those with, especially if it's like a state fund or a county or money that's flowing from another entity, we'll confirm those balances with them. Debt, we send confirmations out to verify that debt balances are properly stated. With the idea being if your, your beginning balance sheet is good, which we audited last year, and then your ending balance sheet is good, everything that happened between those two is what flows through the income statement. And so for the income statement, if there is a, a significant revenue source, particularly sales tax, property tax, we verify those numbers independently with the state or the county through a confirmation to make sure those are good, and then we'll do analytical procedures to make sure revenue numbers appear reasonable year over year. And then if there's significant grant money, we'll, we'll verify that that money's properly recorded and, and, and accounted for by, by the city. So when I say test, it's really just auditing the balance sheet and verifying that those numbers are, are accurate.
Great, thank you very much. That helps draw a little picture for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm still learning a lot. And so you introduced yourself as Jeff Miles, but you obviously don't work for the city?
No, I'm an independent auditor, worked for an accounting firm in Boundless, Utah, HBME. Our firm has been auditing the city. This was our fourth year doing the audit on a, on a five-year contract. So we're, we're independent of the city, not employed by the city, just, we're hired on a five-year audit contract.
Very good. And Corle, are you a city employee or, that's what I assumed, so very good. So my, my next question is, you talked about the surplus, 22% surplus. Does that include the ARPA money or is that independent?
I think she has a breakdown of that, but the ARPA money is, is restricted, like it's set, it is set aside specifically for future spending for infrastructure projects, but I'll let, I'll let Corle break down that balance.
Before we jump to that, Councilmember Hyde, did you have a question on the, or the loans?
Yeah, it's maybe a stupid question again. If you could go back to that slide. I was trying to remember those inter, inter-fund loans, you know, when they happened and whatnot. And it got me to thinking about this airport and wondering how it fit. And I, I, my recollection tells me that we traded some future monies that the airport would receive for some of the projects that we've already done now and, you know, they're between other entities, if, if I remember right.
So Lisa may have the answer.
Anyway, I'm just trying to remember how that, I'm just trying to
I need her head sometimes.
Since I was probably responsible.
Listen, and Lisa, just if you don't mind just introducing yourself so that everyone knows.
Lisa Stout, I'm the Management Services Director now. I was the comptroller for about eight years. I'm a licensed CPA. And the, so the airport loan that Corle talked about, the 50,000, that is related to a piece of equipment that the airport needed to spin propellers. Okay. So that is just so small that we're just recommending that the airport pay that off. The reality is both the airport and the golf fund, they just, they're struggling every year. They probably always will. They're just not going to build a huge fund balance. So the reality is in the future, the council may need to subsidize that repayment, but we'd just like to get that off our books through repayment.
So what about that?
What about the projects that were?
So the projects, when you talk about projects, generally if the FAA through the AIP process, the Airport Equipment Program, we get a million dollars a year. There are instances where other airports don't use their full million and we can borrow against our future grants to do bigger projects. So what that means is that in maybe two or three years, we'll do a smaller project or no project at all to repay that to the other reports, but that doesn't really end up on our books as an inter-fund loan.
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask how it, how it does show up on the books, but maybe it doesn't matter here today, so I'm, I'm happy to wait.
Okay, yeah, we can have a bigger conversation about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you had a question about where the ARPA funds were in our fund balance. Those are showing up under the restricted category, the spendable restricted. And the city had about 26 million in ARPA funds, so the additional funds showing up, and there are other grant funds that are restricted for, so they are spendable, but they must be used on a certain purpose.
And that's where you see the big jump from 21 to 22, that's, that's when the, the ARPA money came in. So we went from 5 million restricted spendable up to the 35 million. And that, not all of that is ARPA. If I remember right, the ARPA money was 26 million's the number that I'm, that I'm remembering. And again, that needs to be, that needs to be spent by December 31st, 2026.
And, and just as a reminder, council did appropriate most of that money. We have 10 million in a category called lost revenue that really any general governmental expenditure can qualify for. A lot went to Marshall White Center, about 5.3 million. And then 10, 12 million went to the water line, the canyon water line.
Okay. And then one other item that Janine wanted us to address is upcoming accounting standards changes. The only significant one that's kind of on the horizon still won't be applicable until fiscal year 2020 and June 30th, 2025, related to compensated absences. And I haven't had a whole lot of time to analyze the total impact that'll have on the city. I don't anticipate it'll have a numerical impact on the city as much as the disclosure, kind of making the disclosures around compensated absences a little more. They're trying to streamline how compensated absences are reported across governments, because every government kind of has different forms of compensated absences, whether it be sick, PTO, et cetera. So, and, and right now we feel like the city's accounting for it properly, the, the accounting standard setters are just kind of tweaking a little bit to make things a little more uniform across all governments. I don't anticipate that being, having a a big impact on, on the city's accounting. And then as far as audit findings or anything like that, we didn't have any written findings this year. We did have, we wanted the city to follow up on the handling of meeting minutes. I don't know if we ever had a resolution with, with that, or how they define draft minutes for, for meetings.
Yeah, we've been working with recorders on the minutes and you've seen they've been coming fast and furious. Part of the issue was that our, the City Council Office has always requested really detailed minutes. And the reason was, is the packet materials that go along with the meeting and the agenda were not, at, at one time were not permanent records, so they would be destroyed at certain intervals. Recently, the state changed that, so those packets are now permanent records. So they're going to be changing the way they do the minutes to shorten them and just reference packet materials, if that makes sense. So that will allow them to turn those around a lot quicker.
And just so the council knows, we, we talked about it in our audit committee meeting, the state, the statute that we're required to test is that meeting minutes are posted within three days after being approved by City Council, which the city has been doing and is compliant with, but there's kind of a more I don't know what the word I want to use, but it's not, it's more of a loose term of how soon those meeting minutes need to be reviewed and approved by council. And so we just made a recommendation that the, the city try and and, and the city has a lot of meetings, so I'm not, I don't want to put blame on anybody, but just I think they're putting in processes to make sure that minutes are, are ready in a more timely fashion for council to approve and then, and then be, be posted.
Janine, what, what's going on with the audio recordings of that? How, how does that all fit in with minutes and things like that?
I don't know if audio recordings, if, what the retention is on that. Do you happen to know, Jason? Yeah, we'll have to find out. I don't know what, what the retention is on that, but I did want to comment. We had legal advice. If, if you recall, or maybe you know, that Eric, every evening after the meeting posts the results, basically this passed, this didn't pass, you know, and that, we were treating that as based on legal advice, that that met the statute to have, have the minutes available, basically saying what happened. And so now there's some question about whether or not that was the best advice, so we're making some, that's why we're making the changes.
So with that, I didn't have any other items to present to the council today. Any, any other questions concerning our audit? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, so I just have a few other things. Jeff kind of covered the timeline that we go through. We normally start getting ready in June. We start with inventory and then do our preliminary testing in August, and then the auditors come back out in November. And we, they're here for about two weeks, and then we prepare financial statements from November into December, and we issue financial statements by the end of the calendar year. And then, let's see, we covered the inter-fund loans, the general fund balance. Here's a graph for those of you that are more visual and it's a little bit easier to see the growth that the city has seen over the past few years. And as Jeff stated, we ended with 22% of that unrestricted, or unassigned fund balance that would be immediately available for council to spend, and that's 22% of the general fund revenues. So as far as the Redevelopment Agency, the fund balance at the end of 23 was 17.9 million. About 9 million of this is in the CBD mall district, and that is partially due to the haircut and will be used for improvements of, at the junction. And I think that's it. Oh, and for debt payments as well at the junction. So as far as highlights and challenges of the fiscal audit and the fiscal year, so in fiscal year 23, we had capital asset investment of 44 million. The majority of this was in the improvements. These are your water, sewer, storm improvements as well as improvements that were done at the parks as well. And we had just under 3 million of vehicles added and 2.5 million of heavy equipment. Our Fleet and Facilities Fund has been improving its fund balance as well as the, and that's partially due to our lease rate restructure that we've done to each of our vehicles on the fleet replacement schedule. Vehicles on the fleet replacement schedule. Um, we, our facilities is also. Improving with the facilities maintenance investment that is appropriate every year through the C I P. Uh, this is just a history of what has been appropriated and then the total expenses. And in the years where those total expenses exceed that budget, it's because we rolled forward that amount. Just, um, yes.
Just a question, can you please repeat again? I didn't quite sink into my brain, the twenty seven million, twenty seven point seven million that you had. For improvements, what does that account for?
So it's any water, sanitary or sewer improvements, as well as improvements at the park, uh parks. Um, building improvements, et cetera.
And infrastructure, is that primarily roads?
Infrastructure is usually done out at B D O and it is roads usually. Um, to cover long-term debt that the city has, this is the long-term debt at the, in the governmental funds. We did have new bonds of two point three five, or sorry, twenty three point five million for the Marshall White Center. You'll also see the premium, the bond premium that was a part of that as well. Just to note that pension liability on the bottom, that is a twelve million, that is. Part of the, um, it's a. Gatsby standard that we have to follow that takes the actuary value of. Your. Unfunded, thank you. Like, I know it. Um, and so that does fluctuate year to year depending on different factors, so. And then in our enterprise funds, uh, we did pay off four point nine or four point one nine million in. Revenue bonds and didn't take on any additional bonds. We did have. A new lease for the medical services fund, which was our stretchers that we lease. Um, in fiscal, our fiscal year twenty two, Acfor did earn the G F O A certificate of. Of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This does require us to do um much deeper dive in our financial report and provide more transparency. And full disclosure in that report, and we have to meet a significant amount of requirements to achieve this award. And then challenges are ones that we face every year, um new governmental accounting standards and adapting to those. Our federal grant standards and reporting with a significant amount of grant, federal grant money that we're getting. We do have to make sure we're, our office is staying on top of those standards. And then just being aware of um the golf and airport cash balances. Airport has had a positive cash balance the past few years and golf is trending that way. Um, but airport could struggle in the future and we would just continue to evaluate that and make sure. Um, if needed, we would come to council to resolve that. Just to give you an idea of the golf cash deficit, in twenty two, we were. Uh, uh, four hundred and sixteen thousand um in the deficit and. In twenty three, we were at two hundred and eighty thousand. As of today, we're at ninety thousand deficit. In cash, so it is our hope by the end of this fiscal year that that will actually be in the black. So that is all I have as of right now. That was your goal?
Any, any other questions for Coralie?
I just have one quick question. So if you go back to that redevelopment agency fund balance. And just, you, I think you said what, I think you said everything, but will you explain why? We started to get more money in that fund balance, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. It, it looks like we have a lot of money in redevelopment.
So part of that housing is, your housing fund is also a part of that fund balance as well. And so that is about three million of that total amount. And then we also took on additional um. Redevelopment areas, so Continental, for instance, ended fiscal year twenty three with a fund balance of two point nine million. So as far as C B D Mall, I do know it ended at nine point three million. But I'm not sure as to why in the past, yeah.
I, I guess maybe, uh, what I'm asking for is an ex, there's a, there's an explanation why.
The growth in that, yeah. So one of the issues with the C D B Mall is we have the haircut districts. When I say haircut, we had other districts that could fund the rec center debt. That we were pulling money into. The haircuts really expire, those districts expire earlier than the debt is paid off. So we needed to build a reserve to cover the debt payments until twenty twenty seven. For those haircuts, so you will see that start to go down as that debt is paid off. Um, so that nine million dollar reserve that Querely talked about, two million of it, well. Probably it wasn't a full two million at the end of twenty three was the bonds we took on in June. Um, we took two million dollars in debt, and then the rest, we were building that fund. Uh, so that we could cover the debt payments until, until they're paid off.
Okay, so let me ask you um a diff, maybe just one different way. So to me, it looks like we have eighteen million dollars to spend. Is that true or not?
No, um, when we, when we classify fund balance in the R D A, we don't, we don't classify it as restricted. Because the whole purpose of the R D A is for development. Um, and we have plans or that money is all committed to a specific purpose in the future. Um, Corley mentioned the Continental, it had two point nine million. That was specifically transferred in from the city for the L T eight D A agreement with J F Capital. And we will use it for debt payments as well.
So a lot of that money is already.
It's restricted, yeah.
That's what, yeah, that's what I, I guess what I'm trying to get, like if I was to look at it in the public and they're, it'd be like, hey, we've got eighteen million.
Yeah, it's a, it's a funny Gatsby thing because it's the whole. Redevelopment is restricted for development. We don't classify it as restricted fund balance, but honestly, it, it truly is restricted for purposes.
And it's also important to remember that these are governmental funds, and so we don't, we don't reflect the debt balances in the governmental funds. And so if you were to, if you were to bring those obligations on, your fund balance would be significantly lower, but we don't have any long-term. Debt at, at the fund level in the governmental funds.
So I had a question, um, as, you know, with. Uh, with the rising interest rates, how has this impacted um our, our balances? Are we? You know, where we're, we have money sitting aside or reserved for the future to be used, maybe in a couple of years. Um, are, are those funds sitting in cash somewhere? Are they, are they committed to some kind of an interest-bearing account or?
So we. Let me see if I can answer this without Lisa coming up and saving me. Um, so the majority of the city's cash, we do keep in the state, uh, it's called P T F. It's a public treasury investment fund and it's invested in different investments in there. And then we do have um interest income that is recognized um. On our books and then allocated throughout the different funds. Um, some of that is unrealized interest income and we're recognizing it for financial reporting. So that is helping us build that reserve, but um as far as. She's gonna save me now.
She's exactly right. I just, I just wanted to just mention that we also work with Morton Investors. They're an investment advisory firm. Um, we have a, a. A policy on how we invest city money that aligns with the, the Money Management Act that the city has. Um, to maximize those investments, so if the city has cash on hand, um, our goal is to maximize that investment. When you talk about bond funds like the Marshall White, the twenty three million. Um, any interest earned on that specific construction fund for, for Marshall White Center. Will go back into the project or will be required to use for debt repayment.
Okay, I think that was kind of the follow-up question is where does that interest go? And so. For the Marshall White or any of the R D A project, projects, is it all the same then?
Yes, yes, we, we pool our cash, so we, we account for it individually in funds, but we pool it for investment and banking purposes. So we allocate that interest income to each fund.
Thank you. Just to add to that, all, all the long-term debt of the city is at fixed interest rates, you know, so. City did a lot of borrowing at a low interest time, which is really good, and now, and just. So you know, the, the P T F rate of return right now is about four and a half percent. Where twenty twenty was down, it was like at point five percent. Um, and so, you know, the city's actually generating interest income where most municipalities. From two thousand eight through two thousand twenty, you know, in, in, interest income returns were.
Minimal.
Were very, were very minimal during that time, so it's, it's nice that we have cash on hand and we can actually. Gain some benefit from it with, with some higher interest rates. Any other questions? Thank you very much then for, for that presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, we will now invite Joe Simpson, our deputy planning manager, to come up and talk about the proposed rezone on three thirty five Seventh Street. Welcome, Joe.
It's good to be with you, counsel. Let me put my eyes on.
So, so excited to be here.
I am excited to be here, always. I love it. I'm sick, I guess, I don't know. You good? All right. So yes, what we're looking at is a rezone, and this is with our new exciting R two S zone, um, which is just awesome. So we're looking at basically infill is what we're doing on three thirty five Seventh Street. So this kind of shows an outline of it, and it consists of multiple parcels. And there is different zoning, there's an R one zoning and then there is a, or a, an. R three zoning and then a C two zoning, so it's multifamily and commercial zoning mixed together. Um, there isn't really any access from Washington to this property. All the access would be to feed off of Seventh Street. Um, and so. When we started talking to um the, the petitioner and how is the best way to. Develop this property, there was really was, came down to either we look at developing it with the two different zones. And create basically two properties that would function together in different zones. If we did that route, and just to give you some numbers, we just got done hearing numbers, I'll keep the trend going. With the R three portion, we could look at having up to twenty nine units. In one building and with the C two, we could have up to sixteen units, which would be forty five total units in two big apartment buildings. They don't want to do too big apartment buildings. They're trying to do some townhomes where they could sell these individual units. And so with that, um, this request is to take that and go from the R two, R three. And the C two zoning and create one zone that could tie together. And so the whole issue is we can't have zoning boundaries that cut through a lot, and so. We need to make one zone, and there was some discussion, do we look at just doing the C two zone? Or go all R three, and really this is a transition area. And so, so happened during that time, we had this new R two S zoning come along and we think it fits the bill. Um, just to give you a layout of this land, of the land here and the multiple parcels that it consists of, so the. The intent of this would have access come off directly Seventh Street. Um, right now, it's a largely vacant piece of property. There is an existing duplex at. Three thirty five Seventh Street and then all of this large vacant piece of land. And this seems to be the same story we talked about with the previous one, we just looked at, it's. Uh, a difficult to, to develop these um landlocked pieces of property. And this uh R two S provides a great opportunity for infill. So as we look at it, um, one of the beautiful things about this new R two S. Zone, I wonder how long I can call it new. We'll, we'll figure that out, but um is it requires. The individual units of the development to be platted, so they could have individual ownership. There's no option to be able to have all of the units under one parcel or one tax I D. They all have to be individually subdivided. And that encourages owner occupation. Um, and, and that's one of the beautiful things about this code in this zone. And it's the only zone we have right now that, that has that requirement. So when we look at zoning, one concern is with buffering, and that's particular in some of these um, you know, infill areas. We have just right close a lot of heavy commercial off of Washington Boulevard, so this is just. West of Washington Boulevard, and then around the property and the surrounding streets, we have a mix of. Two-family, multifamily and single-family um uses through that area, so. This creates this kind of interim transition between the commercial and residential neighborhood. With the group dwelling standards we have in place, which is what would be developed on this project, with this project. There are buffering and screening requirements to also provide those protections with neighboring properties in between uses. Um, again, creates a good transition between that neighborhood to the west and the commercial to the east. Um, I already broke that out for you, but I just couldn't wait. I had to share it with you, but just to kind of show. You know, on its own, we really could potentially with doing nothing here today and using the current zoning could have. Two apartment buildings with more units. Um, this request is to take that down and. We would be looking at thirty six units with this type of development. Um, and then this is pretty much the whole reason we're doing it is we have. Um, uh, criteria for rezones um and zone boundaries in the general plan where. We have those boundaries follow property lines, and this will accommodate that and allow that to occur. Um, and then again, we want to look at interaction and connection. Right now. We have an isolated property that has no interaction with this ability to. Purchase, to acquire a property that has some access and can get this property connected to the neighborhood. Um, meets that criteria, and it will provide vehicle connection, but also pedestrian connections as well. And then nineteen eighty six Lynn Community Plan, I think the last one we did was in Lynn as well. It's an old plan, and so there's not a lot of insight, but um with. The um criteria and policy we have written in the general plan itself, we feel this is, this definitely. Is supported and um staff recommended approval. When it went to the planning commission, it was a recommendation of approval for the rezone.
Questions for Joe?
That's my hair. I do have a couple of questions, not, not really specifically about this project, but about the zone.
Sure.
I was listening to the league policy committee meeting the other day on housing. They were talking about some other things, and they were talking about uh use of uh deed restrictions. To uh govern the use of a, of a parcel. And I'm wondering if that is something that, that, I, and I know we've even had a petitioner talk about it here, you know, about. Yeah, uh, about that's what they'd like to do to make sure that it does meet the, the intent. Um, and I, I like the idea of having something that will actually do, you know, actually do something other than just. We just hope it was gonna work.
Yeah.
Is, is that something that, that might, the city could perhaps impose for a period of time or? A, a, an ownership cycle or I don't know what, you know?
Yeah.
I, I can only tell you what we've done, you know, and when it comes to some of those restrictions. Um, when we've done certain loans for housing through community development, there, we can have restrictions tied with those. With that funding, um, but there's also the ability for a private developer to create CCNRs. Or covenants and restrictions on a property that the HOA can have that are stricter than. You know, what a government can impose, now as far as whether the city, if we have. Um, legal ability to require those kind of deed restrictions, I'm not aware of how, I would definitely want to consult with the attorney's office.
I thought you already had, that's why I asked.
You know those guys and it sounds like Barton, who is basically an attorney, he might have some information.
So I went to the the law school of Google. My understanding is we can do it with a development agreement, if the developer agrees to it as a condition. That we could require, otherwise we can't.
But part of that, ju- just along with that, though, this R two S zone is trying to get us away from deed restrictions, right? That was kind of one of the intentions. So we probably don't want to get back into that whole deal again to make it part of it and that's why I was kind of wondering, can we just make it a permanent part of a? Part of that zone? That that the that, not that a deed restriction, but a but the uh. Development agreement accompany a rezone to that? Yeah, I I'm not sure, I'm not sure on that. Look into that, will you?
Okay.
Yeah, I I, you know, I I think we've been, we've talked about it for years, that we have no ability to really. Require a a an ownership product. And so this is an an effort to to make it more inviting. But maybe if if uh, if this uh, development agreement concept could be part of a rezone. Which we're we're getting them, we're getting petitions for those rezones for the right reason, I believe. Seems like it would be a pretty easy easy lift if if we just asked. Just a thought.
Yeah.
You can always ask.
Yeah. And it would certainly make it more inviting for for this body to to grant the rezone. You know, if that was the case. Good enticement.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem there'd be like a harm to the developer, because once it's out of their hands, it's out of their hands unless the developer is purchaser, so then.
It's just a thought, so I I run that by you.
Or unless in the marketplace, the only groups that can swing a purchase are investors. To rent the property out. You know, that that would be the, if if a developer was saying, I'm gonna build this. And I know that investors are gonna be my buyers and they're gonna buy one, two, three, four of them.
Yeah.
And then rent them, because there aren't individual buyers that can swing it, you know?
At the policy committee meeting, that I was that was part of it, is how do how does how does that work while they get a a permanent? Person in, there there may be a time that when it needed to be rented and. Uh, you know, for a cycle, but I don't, I, yeah, I I, there's a, there's a lot of uh. Yeah, there's a lot to this, but but I think it's something we should look at.
Ownership is better frog than than renters.
Well. The mix is good, but but we're just doing one side of the mix right now, so this ownership thing is is helpful.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right, thank you, Joe, and right in time, Barton's up and slid right into the spot. Uh, we'll next talk about the proposed street name change, renaming, it's not an honorary street name change, so. It's just uh, renaming fifteen hundred West to thirty thirty South. So Barton?
Yes, named after the great king thirty thirty South. So. So, good evening, this is a request for a street name change and this was initiated by city staff. And it's just a renumbering of a street, so the kind of history on this, this is a small. This is a small cul-de-sac off of Midland Drive. That uh, developer did a subdivision, got the subdivision plat recorded and then started. Developing and thought, oops, this, I gave it the wrong number when I did the plat and so. Uh, he said, well, can we change it and we said, well, it's gotta go, since it's already recorded, it's gotta go back through a hearing process and. Back to the city council to change the name and so that's why it's coming to you, this is a little. Industrial subdivision off of Midland Drive. And the request would be to change it from fifteen hundred West to thirty thirty South. And here shows the reason why, uh, Midland Drive is not a north-south street or an east-west street, it's a. It's a forty-five degree angle street and this is why it got named fifteen hundred West to begin with. But then, as the developer looked at, if you go down Midland Drive. You're the twenty-nine eleven Midland, twenty-nine hundred, twenty-nine eighty-four Midland, then three thousand thirty-one. Twenty-seven Midland, so you get down to three thousands. Oh. Thank you. So you go from the twenty-nine hundreds to the three thousands to thirty-one hundreds on Midland Drive, so if you're looking for. A street there, you would be looking at about thirty thirty South, you wouldn't be looking at fifteen hundred West. That's what the issue that the developer had, people couldn't find fifteen hundred West because it's out of sequence there and so. That's why the request is coming forward to rename to fifteen hundred to thirty thirty South, which would be in sequence along Midland Drive. So there are a couple of buildings on the lot and businesses there wanting to have. You know, an official address there and have a street sign uh, reflect the location along Midland Drive. Um, it does also help, there are some other fifteen hundred West segments and so it would help people find. The correct segment here. So the planning commission heard this and they recommended unanimously to recommend to you that you approve the street name change.
Questions for Barton? Councilmember here, uh, microphone.
I'm looking at the Maps app and it's already labeled that.
There are some of those businesses who who have gone and put that. Street address on their properties and so I I'm surprised the Maps app would say that.
Oh, yeah, it's right there.
Oh, okay.
West thirty-three South.
That's.
Okay.
So I guess the Maps app doesn't use the official name, which is wrong.
I can imagine the business owners trying to get people to come to them and having them go somewhere else on the fifteen hundred West or.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Thanks very much, I just, your consideration for eliminating duplicate names in the future, that's that that pertains to this perhaps, but. Is that something that we're voting on or will be voting on in the future or do we need to elaborate more on that? I'm not quite, I don't entirely grasp that.
Oh, just some of the criteria we look at in street names is sometimes if we eliminate duplicates. Then we, that might be a reason to do a street name change, now in a city where you've got. You know where thirty-three hundred South is gonna be, whether you're on this side of the county or that side of the county, you know where that's gonna be, but if it's. Jones Street or let's see, Sunset is a problem, we've got a Sunset here and then a Sunset over here that relate. Completely differently to each other. And so it'd be nice to rename one of those someday if somebody wanted to go through all the trouble to do it, so that's. The idea of eliminating duplicate names.
And council members, like if you'd like, I can briefly talk about like next steps for this application as well as the rezone, so. Um, in in an application like this, um, the next step naturally would be to have it go before you in a city council meeting. Um, to hold a public hearing, um, Barton has prepared a an ordinance for you to. You could consider that ordinance after holding the public hearing, there will be public comment and you can. Deny deny the proposal, you can approve the ordinance, you can table if you have uh, more questions. But I believe in that ordinance Barton, I believe it says some reasons, one of them being to eliminate duplications, one of them is to. Uh, avoid confusion, which would have a negative impact on emergency services or for any other good cause. And so if you agree with those statements, you could approve that ordinance in the meeting. And then um, on the rezone, kind of a similar situation, uh, there would not be a public hearing, but it would go before you at a council meeting. Um, there would be public comment and there's also an ordinance that uh, if you'd like to approve the rezone, there's an ordinance ready for you to approve it. Um, you can also deny the rezone or table if you've got uh, other questions. As far as dates go, we were kind of just looking out to the twelfth of March. If if you think that's an appropriate day for both of these items.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, good deal.
Does that happen automatically? I don't know exactly the process.
Yeah, yeah, I think uh, I mean, we, I think that we're okay with that, so. It sounds like a good process for that. Um, I did have one question, was there any other name considered other than thirty thirty uh, South? Since it's not really a directly south street, it's more of a, it's the other X, end of the X of that cross, you know, section?
Uh, no, we didn't consider any others, uh, Russ Eldridge from Engineering, he handles all the addresses and uh, that was. The one sequentially that he assigned to it.
But the businesses that run along Midland use the south as, just like you illustrated, so so that's why. That's why it makes sense for thirty thirty.
Yeah.
So yeah, if you look at, go back to your map, that one across the, the one that goes through the business across the street. Is thirty twenty-seven, is that what you're?
Uh, this is American Way. Oh, thirty twenty-seven, yeah, that's just a driveway, that's thirty twenty-seven Midland Drive. Yeah.
So, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, he could have requested that it be Jones Street or something like that, but. Just stuck with numbers.
Okay. All right, very good, um, so Sarah Tolliver um, has gotten called up into some legislative-type meetings. And uh, won't be able to join us today, so we are looking to reschedule her to March twelfth, the March twelfth work session. And um, is that gonna be okay? Yeah. And so. We'll look forward to hearing about Visit Ogden and all the good things that those folks are doing at that time. Any any other council business or comments that we need to look at, um, I think Steve, you've sent out the.
Code of Conduct?
Code of Conduct.
Yes.
Meetings, so we're got, I've seen, I've seen a few emails, so we're kind of moving forward with some ideas there.
Thank you.
All right, any anything else that we need to talk about, uh, Janine, anything you've got on your list?
I don't have anything else, I did remember, I forgot to bring in the belt buckle that we gave Hope, we had one made for the city. And I don't think all of you got to see it, so I'll bring it in on the break and let you take a look at it and then that will be placed in our cabinet in the council chambers.
I just had a question, when did we decide to put the group dwelling zone text amendments on and agenda? I can't remember the date.
For consideration, yeah, uh, we've got it tentatively scheduled for the twelfth of March.
Okay, oh, okay.
Uh, that's actually the twentieth, the group dwellings is.
Oh, sorry.
We got a bunch of these, they gave us like.
What did you say?
Seven transmittals, we're trying to do, so the group dwellings is next week on the twentieth for consideration. Uh, we do have some other ones on the twelfth, so these couple that you heard tonight, uh, the Flex, uh, which you'll hear next week. The Flex Industrial Zone and then the short-term rentals, tentatively depending on how the work session goes next week, so.
Okay.
That's what we've got on the twelfth, but the group dwelling is scheduled for next week.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I was gonna have Barton give us an update on the, where we're at with the code changes and everything, but.
Um, I did get an email about the um, Mersey Car Celebration, um, I see we've got Christie here. And I don't know if you would like to just come up and report a little bit about what we have planned for next Thursday, if that's okay. Put you on the spot, yeah, I'll teach you to teach you to come to work session, right? Yeah, there you go.
Um, yeah, we would and have invited you all out for next Thursday. We also have an airport event the day before, so I've got my lots of, lots of things rolling, but um. So um, the Mersey Car, um, as you guys all know of the history of it being a gift from France after our gifts to them after the war. Um, is a really special artifact that we have and you all also helped to fund the restoration of it. Um, we've been hanging on to it so that we can celebrate its seventy-fifth anniversary, um, this next Thursday on the twenty-second. At five o'clock outside, we'll have a reception, we weren't really sure what the weather would be like in February, so. We have kind of a casual reception outside, hopefully the weather's well, um, good and we can um, celebrate it there. And then inside, we have a special um, celebration inside at the Browning Theater, um, a ceremony. And it honors our veterans and the history of what that car and what our veterans mean to our our state history and our world history. As well as our locals, um, so we should have a a good showing of veterans, we've made a very personal invitation to many of them locally. Um, and then after that ceremony, um, the event will move into the grand lobby of Union Station. And it'll be an open invitation as well to just view the Centennial Exhibit if you haven't seen it already. Spend some time there to to appreciate that and then a another special um, showing that we'll have that night is some of the artifacts actually from. The Mersey Car that were from gifts made from the people of France given to the state of Utah. And so there's still some of those in the state archives that they're gonna have on hand for you to see that night, so have a special night.
Great, thank you for coming up on impromptu like that.
And all the events are on Facebook and website and everything, so if you need more information. Twenty-second, yes. Five to eight.
Okay, uh, one other item, more of a calendar item is the the first Tuesday in March, we are not planning to meet. Um, I think that you would have seen that on the uh, agenda that went out, um, to allow council members to attend caucus meetings as as they. Decide on that, so. And we'll, yeah, I I can't think of anything else that we have here to talk about at this point. Yes. Oh, thank you, Brandon, so there, we are, we have been invited to participate at some of the elementary's schools for this month as the idle free. Idle Free Initiative and so Brandon sent out a schedule of the schools, if you can look at that and see if there's a time that would work in your schedules. Uh, it's a, um, I know Chair, uh, past Chair Trubaker and I did that last year to a couple of the schools and that was, it was, it's great to be with those kids. They they love the stickers, they love to see somebody different at the school, I guess. Um, so we kind of were treated like like uh, celebrities a little bit, but anyways, it was fun, so take a look at your schedule if you're able to do that. Um, it's a great opportunity to interact with those guys, so.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
Probably for Mara, we, um, last week he asked a question about the contract for the brown ice cream, do we? He sent another email also asking, but I don't think any of us know that or have that contract, do we have any information on that?
I don't, I don't actually have any further information for you right now, except to let you know that I know um, Gary is looking into it. And he will not be at council meeting tonight, he had a conflict with that, but I know that he would like to. Most likely, yeah, further discuss it with the RDA board in that context, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we will take this time uh, to adjourn before our six P M uh, RDA meeting.